Hello, it is 8:30. I will go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda today is an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard today. Is there anyone in the audience that's wishing to address the county board on anything that is not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Have we had any online submittal to speak?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Today, we'd like to recognize Shannon Moran from our Auditor's Office for a 15 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much to Shannon for all that she does in the Auditor's Office. They're certainly quite busy with early voting that's happening today, so congratulations, Shannon. Alexandra, today we're recognizing you for 15 years of service to Clay County and our citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do. We certainly appreciate it.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold, but Alex plays a very crucial role in our Child Protection Unit. She is our permanency and adoption worker, and last year she completed 24 transfer of custodies or adoptions of Clay County kids. This year, we're already at 29. She also is our relative foster care licenser, so when kids go into care, she works with the relatives, grandparents, aunts, uncles, to try to get them licensed to provide foster care for their relatives. She also does a little bit of case management, stepparent adoption, and a bunch of various other things, but we really appreciate all the work she does.
The next item today is the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to pay the bills, a second from Commissioner Evinger. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from October 18th, 2022 were in the packet.
Move for approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Evinger to approve the minutes.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Number two today is the update on the schematic design preliminary estimate for our substance use crisis facility. We have Steve Gertz with Gertz Construction. Troy is here as well, our crisis facility director, and our county administrator, Steve. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, as you recall, back in July of this year, the board entered into a design contract with Klein-McCarthy, and based on their original presentation, they brought forward a project with a high-level estimate of $13,941,198. There's two additional cafeteria options for a design change in the front and then an area in the back for the clients to be outside, totaling another $135,000. Our design committee has met seven different times and has dialed that design in. As you are aware, Steve Gertz Construction Firm was hired to work as our construction management firm, and they've been working with us and the Klein-McCarthy team to dial in that cost estimate. Mr. Gertz here today, and he has, there's a document in your packet that provides information on the most up-to-date schematic design, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for allowing us to work on this project. We're excited about it, and we're going to do our dead noble best, and we won't let you down. Before, I think in your packet, you had an estimate, and when I was visiting with Klein-McCarthy, they requested that I arrange my estimate so you guys could do a line item by line item comparison.
Okay.
I'm going to do like a 5,000-foot overview of the estimate, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But Klein-McCarthy has done a great job on the schematic design. It had a lot of information, so we were able to do a pretty detailed takeoff on it, and I think the numbers are in pretty good shape. When I'm putting these numbers together, I'm assuming that it would be spring work, so.
Okay.
The inflationary costs that were in your preliminary budget are included in my numbers.
Steve, can we have you scoot the microphone just a little bit? The TV's having a hard time picking it up. Thank you.
Oh, is that?
Better.
Okay, thank you. So, in the building construction costs, there's probably two line items that vary quite a bit from your preliminary budget. Mechanical, I've assumed that we're going to have a more robust mechanical system with the B3, not knowing, so I think I'm pretty good in that line item. I've initially budgeting here at $45 for HVAC per square foot and $25 for plumbing, and that might be 10% more than what the current market is for that type of system. So I'm kind of building in a little bit of complexity with knowing that the B3 would be coming.
Steve, just to clarify, for the plumbing component, that is assuming the geothermal?
That's assuming the VAV system, but I've made sure that I've got a robust number in there for all the different temperature control stuff.
Great.
And knowing that you might need to have more VAVs with the geothermal. I'm trying to cover some of that cost in that estimate. That's why you see a big difference of $1,006,000 on my number and your $1.1 million previously, so.
And I think clarification for any of the public seen, the reason we're kind of not quite so sure as to what is actually going to be required is because we're waiting to hear from our, from the grant awardees to see what component we are required to have in there. So that's why there's a varied number in there, and we're just trying to plug in something for planning purposes.
Sure. And we did have a meeting last week with the geothermal or the B3 people that are working on that study, and it looks like we'll be trending towards a geothermal system. And they gave us some preliminary information on what the geothermal well field expectations are. We did do some pricing on that, and the well field is going to be about $200,000. Again, we've got enough in our contingencies that I think that we can, we can cover that without having a big impact on our budget.
Okay.
But as, as they get more and more detailed into their study, there might be some solar and some other things that they're going to look at, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then on electrical line item, I've put the security down below the line because that'll be an owner furnished item that will help coordinate, because they have a single source supplier that they want to use that does all of their security, so. That's why my number is a little bit lower on the electrical. And then the soft costs, you see a comparison, side-by-side comparison of the two, and when you get into, you know, the soft costs, I've included in my estimates the pre-design for the B3 study for the architect and the implementation of the study in our budget. You get to the bottom. Also, I've included the front entry upgrades because that was included as part of the schematic design plan that we are working off of and firmed up kind of some of those costs for the back patio that were, and some add alternates in your initial budget. So, my contingencies, I've got a 4.5% design contingency and a 6.8% construction slash owner contingency. Overall, you're, we end up with the same, same line item with the contingency kind of being the plug number to get those, the difference, two different estimates to balance out. So if you look on the bottom, I just, there's some of the main items included in this estimate where there's a difference between the current estimate and your preliminary budget on June 2nd of '22, so. I'm feeling pretty good about the numbers. I'm feeling pretty good about the budget, and the biggest thing is the B3 comes into more focus. We can fine-tune that, and I think we'll be in pretty good shape.
Questions for Steve on this piece? Any items of clarification?
And just to be clear, Madam Chair, in addition to what the B3s, the B3 is partially captured in here, but from a, from a fee standpoint for both the architects and Gertz Construction, that was outside of the scope of the initial drawings, and so there, there'll be, in addition to the cost, there'll be some additional, I guess, adjustments we'll need to make to those contracts once we get, once we get the final project.
Okay. In terms of timeline, I know we've talked a lot about going out for bid early next year. In regards to the site, currently, we have a couple, another project going on there. Steve, is there anything that we need to shore up this fall on that site to make way for this project? Any loose ends there?
Well, I think that, you know, we're, one, trying to get XL there. I think that will be an important piece for the spring, but the second part is we do have some, there's some clay from the original project that we'll probably have to have moved once we, once we get, once we start with that project.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask is I'm not seeing that cost estimate encapsulated in the, in the estimate, and so if that's going to be a cost, I don't want it to have to shift to this project because it is related to the other project.
And just one other point on that line. If we do proceed with geothermal, a lot of times, they'll start while the ground is frozen. They'll drill through the first four feet of frost, and if they're going 200 or 300 feet down, you know, after that, it's fairly smooth sailing. We'd probably, if, if we could, we could, we'd probably start that. That would probably be one of the first things, because they'll actually drill those wells before we strip any of the site or anything like that, because then they haven't got any depressions that will hold water and snow, and then after they get all the wells drilled, they'll come in and dig trenches and connect all the wells into a, like a big junction box.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Campbell and I have a construction meeting on Monday, I believe, and we can make sure, clear up anything on that end, because I would hate for that to push anything back. Any other questions?
I'm trying.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Are there any areas where, where land isn't conducive to geothermal?
They're, they're, they do have to do a conductivity test to make sure that the soil is, you know, the conductivity for the heating and cooling for the geothermal. Not that I know of. We haven't, it's been, we did geothermal down at the Blue Stem project, and I think that was the last project that we had completed a geothermal system on, and it's primarily because the cost of natural gas was so much cheaper. Now that's going up, so probably makes it more competitive, but.
But here in the valley, you don't see any reason why we might have a surprise on this particular site?
No, and we did do some checking, and we, we know of a firm that would do that conductivity test. We were going to, we just found that out this morning. And so we'll forward that information on to Klein-McCarthy, and it's like $5,000 for them to drill a well and do the test to make sure that it's sufficient for, for the geothermal system.
Thank you.
Steve, we have talked a little bit internally about as we transition from a detox planning, solution planning type committee, and Commissioner Gross and I have served on that for a long time. There seems to be, there's kind of an overlap now where we're needing to really look at that finance, construction committee slash finance committee, similar to what we did with our correctional facility. At another point, there'll be a programming component that we'll need to add in, but it seems to me that we're at the juncture where we need to really formally set aside a finance slash construction committee for this. Is that where you're at as well?
Yeah, once, Madam Chair, Commissioners, once we've got now a schematic design number, I think we're far enough along in the project where I think that it would make sense for us to shift to the format that we followed in, in previous projects, which would be our facilities finance committee, which I think is comprised of yourself and Commissioner Campbell. And then we would continue on with the programming portion, which has, I think, generally been out of our auto home placement with Commissioner Gross and yourself.
Okay. So, you know, I think if the board approves, I think it's, it's probably time that we do that. Last, a couple of weeks ago, we were in a meeting where there came up, I think Joe had a request, he needed a purchase within a certain dollar amount, and it still was going to come to the board, but we didn't necessarily have the approval of that committee per se to do those preliminary purchases before coming to the board. This is the same thing that we've done with all of our other construction committees, but now certainly, since we've hired this firm, I think it would be appropriate to start moving towards the construction planning component.
Madam Chair, I would move the recommended committees restructure from what it has been.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to create that committee as recommended. Just for clarification, the detox planning would continue with Commissioner Gross and I. The finance construction committee would then shift to Commissioner Campbell and I. We can address programming components later. So we had a motion and a second. Any further questions or clarification? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Madam Chair, may I suggest, just for your consideration, based on the board's action this morning, in previous, in previous projects, you have allotted the facilities, finance facility committee, the ability to prove up to a certain amount of change prior to, prior to coming to this board, and so it's certainly up to you, but this last project, we recommended up to $50,000 prior to coming to this board, and so leave that up to your wishes, but.
Just for clarification, you said the finance committee. I think, I think the actual board action was that both Commissioner Mojo and I would have to agree to it, wasn't it?
That's correct, yes.
So, because the, the construction committee, finance and construction committee deals with more than just the two of us.
Yeah, sorry. This is what we, we've done periodically in order to either make, make purchases, that there's an opportunity where there'd be some savings before coming to the board, but it would be to receive the approval from the two commissioners that serve on the committee for a pre-purchase prior to coming to the full board. Is there the dollar amount?
$50,000 is what we are, what we're currently utilizing on the resource recovery. I think that seems to have been sufficient during this process.
And I just want to comment, you know, during this last project, and I'm probably going into this next project, there are really some time, time-sensitive decisions that need to be placed where two weeks can make a real difference on, on a pre-ordering something and getting something approved as to waiting to the next full board to be able to do it. So, so I think it's critical that we have that ability to move forward, and I think it's cost-effective to do it.
Board wishes?
Move approval as described.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Evinger to approve. The commissioners up to $50,000 pre-approval before coming to the board. If necessary, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you guys on this project.
Thanks, guys.
So, Madam Chair, maybe Steve, real quickly, Steve, before you leave, so when we start these meetings, do you have, are we going to have a preferred place that we're going to meet until you get up, set up? I know, just to give an example, right now, we meet out in a construction trailer out there for the current job. That might not be till quite some time, but if we meet before that, where would be, do you have a suggestion where we should meet, or?
We could either meet in Cambridge here or in my, or.
Or we have the Government Center as well, I suppose.
For the design pieces, we've met, and Gertz Construction has been present in that. It's been nice to have the availability for microphones. I know that our architect in St. Paul has not always been at, I think they're alternating every other just to save on travel. So wherever we meet, I'd like to make sure there's a virtual dial-in component available, but.
That could be here at, at the Government Center.
I think you can coordinate with.
Yeah.
Construction companies.
Once we get into construction, then we'll.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Great. Exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Item three today is an update on the reorganization of our administration and HR department.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Commissioner. As you guys are aware, back in July, this board approved the reorganization of the administration and HR departments with Colleen's pending retirement. We're looking to shift to, to a two-pronged approach with a communication, full-time communications coordinator and administrative assistants position. Our goal was to provide about a month overlap with the, with the communication coordinator with Colleen, as we've seen with many of our other positions. Took us a little bit longer to find the, the right people for those positions, and so I came, come before you this morning to make just a minor adjustment request. We would be looking to, to have both the administrative assistant and the full-time communications person coordinator starting on December, excuse me, November 7th, and that would allow them each to, for an overlap with the holiday in there and Colleen's retirement midweek. We have, will provide about six or seven days for, for oversight, and with both of them being new, we thought it would be good to have, good to have that, that two-years hearing what Colleen has to say. When we look at it from a financial standpoint, based on the decisions that you made, we would have, this is actually be a cost savings of about $500 or $752, so.
I was just watching Colleen, and she didn't even smirk once when we referred, there she goes, to her being gone. Certainly, we are, this is a reluctant replacement because Colleen's a rock star that really certainly keeps me in order. Without her, I would definitely be lost. She saves me a lot. So, we're going to really miss you, Colleen. We have had a series of interviews and discussions at the Personnel Issues Committee. Commissioner Campbell and I have been part of those discussions about how best to address the restructuring, and really excited about the individuals that we were able to interview and subsequently move forward with job offers. I think it's going to be really exciting for meeting the need as we move forward. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, and I, you know, we, we talked a little bit about that and, and how this, what he's proposing today changes from what originally planned, and, and in the grand scheme of things, the total dollars that were budgeted are still, it's still going to fall within those total budget dollars. So it, it just makes sense that we take advantage of all training opportunities that we have moving forward, and I think, you know, based on that, we kind of recommend too that, that we should go this route.
Questions or comments from the board?
I move approval, the hiring of both positions on effective November 7th.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the hiring of the communications coordinator and administrative assistant effective November 7th.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I might just add, while we're getting ready for, if I could, Madam Chair, the Commissioner Mojo and I were involved with the interviews for the communications piece, and we, we had, did have some good, good candidates there, and I think we've, I think Steve selected a good one. That, that was obviously his choice, but he asked that. We, we sit in on those, and then the other admin assistant one, we were not part of those interviews, but I'm assuming that, that Steve and Darren together chose wisely, so.
I did misspeak on that, sorry. Thank you. Okay, item four today is a request to fill a vacancy for the office associate in the sheriff's office. We have Mr. Lansom with us today.
Morning, Commissioners. I apologize for sheriff emptying you at a conflict. We're swearing in a new deputy. It happened to be the exact same time.
Oh, no.
So.
Well, that's exciting that we're swearing in a deputy.
Coming before you today to ask for approval to hire office associate, which also will be our TAC, which is our terminal agency coordinator that ensures accuracy and quality control with BCA, FBI, all of our entries and crime stats, and that's the position we're looking for, with the possibility of a backfill.
All right. Questions?
I'd move approval with backfill.
We have a motion to approve the request of the backfill, and a second as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five today is a presentation on new emergency procedures. We have our Information Services Director, Mark Sloan, with us. Joe, are you also in on this? Facilities Director, Joe Olson. Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I am representing the Safety and Security Committee today. We have about a dozen members on our committee. Our fearless leader is Joe Olson, and on does one of our members, and the rest of our members are from all of our major divisions and our buildings, and we try to get as big a cross-section as we can so that we can work toward keeping our employees safe in all the things they do at work. We do a lot of different parts of that, but one of the things the committee's worked on over the years is how the, how the staff deal with emergencies. So about 15 years ago, we came out with this handy flip chart guide, and we issued it to all of our employees and had, and it gives them a little, little flip chart they can go through, so if there's an emergency, they can flip it up and say, what do I do? We've used that for about 15 years. It's worked pretty well, but what we've learned in that time is it's not, it's not very easy to update it because of how it was printed, but it's also become kind of obsolete because some of the procedures for some activities has changed over time. So as a committee, we started looking at how do we update those procedures, and we've come up with a whole new set of emergency procedures that we have put together. Specifically, Lieutenant Tweetin was the chief author of this, actually putting the document together. It contains all the procedures we had before, and it just has some more in-depth points to some of those things, some more details, more steps that staff can follow, trying to answer more and more questions. One of the bigger parts of this document is, there is a section in the document where we're, as we work through this, we're going to have every supervisor sit down with every employee is the goal, and go through this, this, there's basically a form, and it can be done either online or on a piece of paper. It doesn't really matter, but the purpose of it is to go through with every employee to answer the specific questions of, you know, where's my nearest fire extinguisher, my nearest exit, the AED, all those kind of things that you need to know that most people don't pay attention to, but we're trying to work hard to make sure our staff knows the answers to those questions. We've done quite a bit of work over the last couple of years. We've expanded the number of AEDs we have available, a lot of those kind of things, that we've tried to roll out to make our systems as safe, or our buildings as safe as we can. Another thing that has been driving up how this procedure plan came up out was we've got more buildings in more locations than we've ever had before. When these first, when the first one was written, we, basically all our staff were in two buildings. Now they're scattered amongst many, and the procedures are slightly different in those buildings. So, the emergency procedures we put together now have overall guidelines of how we expect staff to respond in certain emergencies. However, we know that because of where they may be or what their department configuration might be, there may be differences to that, so we expect that they'll talk about it. Our whole goal is for them to talk it through and figure out how best they can respond to vast. to a vast array of things. Just a side note, our emergency notification system that we use to tell people we've got an emergency taking place is very robust. We've got a large system in place that notifies—can notify our employees of pretty much every emergency we could have. It's done—they'll be told through their computers, through their phones, through the overhead paging systems, all the screens. It will come everywhere we have employees, they're gonna get a thing that pops up and basically—in a lot of cases, it'll come up and say the main bullets, what they're supposed to do, you know, kind of those things. They'll come right on the screen, say, "Follow these steps" or "Listen for further instructions" or whatever may it happen to be. But that system works really well, and we don't use it very often, which is a good thing. But it's—it's just so you know, we've got quite a system that does that. Another thing we added to this document, our original document, it was six pages long. This new one is 47, which sounds like government at its best, right? But what we did was we added in here the evacuation maps for all of our buildings. You know, they're on the wall by the elevators. Every place you go, you see that little map. What we wanted to do is allow people to actually be able to sit down and look at them without having to get up and go find it, or if they're in a different building, they can look up the information. And on those maps, it just lists evacuation routes, where the fire extinguishers are, where the AEDs are, where the storm safe places are. All those things are all listed on those maps, so you can actually look at it. This document is available on our Intranet site for our employees. They can download the PDF and print it out themselves, or read it on the screen. Or there's also gonna be an interactive version where you just click on the emergency, and it'll pop up those things so that we can get the information they want. The Safety and Security Committee, as we—we're rolling this out today. This is the first day it's coming to life. What we'll do is we'll start working through—we'll start with our—next, we'll probably go through our managers, and then we'll work our way on down as far as training. We're gonna start training people on some of these things in here and what they need to know and how we want them to learn more about it. That will happen over the next several months. We fully expect that by spring, we'll be doing full-on emergency training, actual events, lockdown drills, fire drills, tornado drills. We'll do all those. We used to do those a few years back. We've stopped because of COVID, kind of stopped everything. But we'll come back to life with those this next spring, so we'll actually walk our employees through each—many of these major—the ones we expect or are most concerned about will actually conduct those training exercises. So our staff gets an idea of what it sounds like when the alarm goes off or the alert goes off, and then what they—what steps they need to follow and how they need to do it. So our whole goal as a committee is to try to keep our staff as safe as they can and give them the information they need to be safe. This document, of course, our goal this time, I think, is to try to make better on the fact that it's a living document. We want to be able to keep it up to date, up to date and current, and make sure that we've got the best practices inside this document that we can possibly come up with. So I just wanted to introduce you to it so that you had an idea that we're working hard to keep our employees and our citizens that are in our buildings and all of our facilities as safe as we possibly can.
Mark, thank you so much for the presentation and for the committee's work that has got us this far. It really has changed in the last few years, as you alluded to. The only—well, I think there's several comments that might come, but the only question I had is on the back, where we specifically list building-specific locations and addresses, which are wonderful. I assume they'll be posted by the door if a member of the public needs to call 911. They know the address. But we have several outlying highway shops. Are those going to be included in that list as well?
That's a great idea. Yes, sure. You bet. We can do that. I don't—
Commissioner Campbell.
Madam Chair, thank you, Mark. I had an opportunity to read through some of this, and I mean, it's what you've got here, and Joe, it's really good. And I think it's timely that it's being updated. I just have a couple of comments in regards to whether we—whether we're talking about a procedure here or something that's been formally adopted by the Board. And I'm gonna use your exact words. You said that we expect staff—how we expect staff to respond. If we're gonna expect staff to respond, is—are those things that we expect them to respond in one way or another, is that somewhere within a policy? And to me, it goes to, "What if somebody doesn't?"
Right.
Right?
Yeah. And we were not asking this to be a specific policy, specifically because we want to have enough latitude to make the response different for different locations. We have a lot of different places that are—that may be different. So what we are—we're saying, you know, "You should follow these if you can", but we treat them as a guideline.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess, you know, when I—when I read in there, there's—for instance, there's talk about when it comes to a—any emergency situation, who is allowed to speak on behalf of the county? And there—in here, it says who it is.
Right.
And I like that.
Yeah.
But again, what if—what if somebody else decides they're gonna speak?
Right.
You—do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah. I do know that there's part of that is also in our personnel policy.
Okay, as long as—as long as—as long as those pieces are covered within another policy, then that's fine.
Right.
Because—because otherwise, if we're gonna—if we're gonna be stating in here, "The only people who can do something and so and so and so and so", and this is just a guideline.
Right.
I—I—I don't have any problem with it being a guideline. I just want to make sure that—the issues that we have in here, and I'm again going back to your words, where we expect.
Right.
Anytime I see something or hear something that you're expected to do this, is it covered in a policy?
Right. Okay.
That's just a—yeah.
Commissioner Kaylee.
The other thing I like about this being procedures is this then can be a living document, and you can make changes very quickly without having to wait for Board approval. But I agree that some things should be in policy. As I was reading through this, there's some examples of emergency equipment. And one thing I did not see is—I'm wondering if in places like Detox or maybe our juvenile facility, if staff would feel safer if they had a button to call 911 versus trying to get to a phone?
We—oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we have 14, 15—I'm trying to remember the number of panic buttons deployed. We have quite a few of them. We can't—the panic buttons we have can't dial 911. That's against the rules. You can't have something that dials 911 that you can't talk back on.
Okay.
But they notify other staff that there's a situation taking place. We have those in place in several locations where we are—mostly where we're dealing with public. The staff that work in those spaces are trained in how to use those. Yeah, we don't—I guess we didn't talk about those in this particular plan. It'd be under the security side. I suppose we could at some—somehow. But right now, the way they're configured is a little different in different locations. Like, a good—really good example is across the street in the Law Enforcement Center, they have five interview rooms where they meet with people. Every interview room has a panic button under the desk that the—whoever's in there can trigger, and then it notifies the rest of the building that there's assistance that's needed in Interview Room 5 or whatever it might happen to be. In different places, they do different things, so—but they notify staff that there's a need for assistance. Yeah, we have those.
Okay.
Mark, can I—and I want to add to that comment, too, is one thing we're working on above and beyond this is a—it's called—it's an emergency book, I guess, that each building we're forming, each safety committee member is—kind of represents a building that we have on this, and we're gonna be forming a safety, I guess, response team to that building that, you know, four or five people would be trained to know exactly where, you know, a air handler shutdown button is. You know, so there's a team of people that know where all these, you know, security features we've put in for the building will also know. And then we'll have a, I guess, a map and everything showing all this, and then emergency numbers and maintenance and everything. So this team above and beyond will be able to still—we'll know a little bit more than, you know, somebody that's reading the policy that can respond during times of this, too. So that's something we're currently working on as well.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, just compliments on this. Had some experience with constructing this and similar items. This is a good, clear procedural thing that we can disseminate. Just two observations. Number one, it is important that we remember the difference between procedures and policy. And in my former career, we referred to them as general orders or rules and regs. And you've got to keep procedures flexible enough to where it is applicable to people despite their limitations, physically, emotionally. You can't order people to be fast, clear-headed, and healthy. But you can develop procedures where they know the best route for themselves to take. The other is we need to make sure that we have a review to where there's not a conflict, where there are procedures that are outlined here that don't imply something would be a violation of our policies. And I am going to assume that's been done here. This looks like it's been pretty well thought out. Also, just one final cautionary note, there are some things like alarm buttons, panic alerts, and some of the security measures that we have to keep in-house. And we want to make sure that those aren't put in anything that is available under FOI or that we discuss them outside of where the security measures are in place. So just one—one little cautionary tale on that. This looks like very good work, and I appreciate the time that you put in on it.
Thank you. And to your point, that's why if you looked at the floor plans in there, that you don't see the correctional facility or the juvenile detention facility for that exact reason.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? It doesn't appear as though you need Board action to approve this.
Right.
At all, but certainly, I'm hearing from the responses that the Commission is in favor of what you've presented to us. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six today is a request to move forward with Family Service Center Phase Two Lobby Improvement. Our Facilities Director, Joe, will take this.
Yes, so while back, we approved the lobby improvement project, which was to update the first floor with new tile and lights, ceilings, floors, and signage. And so this second phase of this project is to—we worked with the Building Committee to put together a project where we would go to the second through fifth floor as well. So the goal is to have the same stuff done to these floors, so then when the general public comes in, you have a uniform look between all floors, is our goal here, too. So I've got numbers together here, and we have a total project cost for this of $90,0751. And how we're proposing to fund this is we're gonna use $56,000 out of the capital bond funds, and if approved today, we would have a remaining $12,834, and that was left in there in case we ran into some additional wrap-up items on our other projects within the capital plan. And then we're proposing to use Fund 19 to fund the rest of it in the amount of $34,0751. So got—this is—I guess I'm asking for approval to move forward with this, and it's moving actually pretty fast over there. So I would say I would push to probably have this done by January 1st if approved today.
Board questions? Commissioner Gross?
Oh, no, just a comment that we discussed is that at our Building Committee meeting, and it's a good plan. Been working on rejoining the Family Service Center for the last two, three years, and I think it's a good plan to do and make a motion to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the request, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any other discussion from the Board? Questions? Anything else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Our next item today are the committee reports. Commissioner Ebbinger, I know you have a couple of weeks to report on. Would you like to start today?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. On the 18th of October, I met with Commissioner Campbell, James O'Donnell from West Central Juvenile Detention Facility, and County Administrator Larson, just a discussion regarding an upcoming meeting with our partners at the West Central Juvenile regarding minimum use by numbers and upcoming budget. The meeting was attended and addressed by Commissioner Campbell last week. I was unable to attend. Wednesday, on the 26th, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting virtually. We approved four contracts, reviewed the 2023 cash budget draft. The final will be presented at the next meeting, and we'll have it for a vote for the Board of Authority. Looked at part of the Fargo work plan out on University near the river, reinforcing some of the structures there. They couldn't get a—they came in overbid, so we looked at refinancing, and that was taken forward the following day, on the 27th, at the Diversion Authority Board—Diversion Authority's Board Meeting. A couple of things that—a happy note here on awards. The Public Sector Procure of the Year Award, the Best Financial Structure Award, and Legal Advisor of the Year Awards were all presented to the Diversion Authority for their operations in—as a 3P partnership and as the original Board operated. So very great kudos to the professionalism and the innovation that we've had. And a lot of that can be attributed to John Shockley, our attorney. Came up with some really groundbreaking ways of financing this project and has been great counsel to the Diversion Authority. The final contract for the Executive Director was presented. Moving forward on that, and again, I mentioned the bid for the Fargo Erosion Protection on University, and that was approved by the full Board. We also had an update on the project's safety plan, an overall view of how that's handling. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On October 26th, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting in Purim. The—obviously, the plant operation is running smoothly. That's good to hear. Our revenues are falling in line with our budget, revenues and expenditures. We're looking to probably end up having slightly more cash at the end of the year this year than we did last year, which is always a nice problem to have. We did—we talked—I think I reported that earlier, we had approved replacing a concrete door that—or door with concrete that was damaged because of the fire that they had there. They have since withheld on that because they had to replace a fan that was pretty expensive, and there was only two available in the entire country, and so they had to spend the money to get one of those in. That's a pretty important deal, and so we don't know—ultimately, I think they still plan on doing the concrete door, but they felt it wasn't really important at the moment to do. We—we spent some considerable time talking about the drug and alcohol policy. It's—they're trying to model it after Otter Tail Counties. Otter Tail County has kind of a unique one. A lot of different issues there, and there's all these changes that are going on right now with chewables and all those things that are here now, and what is prescribed. And so we've just asked them to actually bring a draft policy to look at so that—because we're— bring a draft policy to look at, so that, because we're, it's all over the place right now on what, what potentials are. And then we had a discussion on the dental insurance. The dental insurance that they had was, the premiums were going to rise considerably, so there was a request to move that to, I believe it's the same company that we have here. The same thing happened where there was a change in premiums, and so they got a three-year contract that basically allowed them to stay at the same current premium dollar amounts, annually or monthly. On October twenty-seventh, we also had the MCC JPA meeting. We received our land ac, monthly land acquisition status report. We did, we did approve and negotiated agreement on, on a significant property in Clay County that's been working on for a long time, that also included, part of that was a partial land swap that dealt with, what we had was organic land, and the person who was going to swap it was not going to use it as organic land, but, but we had already reached out, and, you know, we, our previous one was we wanted to keep that available, organic land for organic land swap. And we gave every landowner a significant amount of time to come forward if they wanted to do that, and, and nobody came forward, and so now we had this opportunity to close on a deal, and we took it. So we did follow what was considered our, our organic land policy, so.
I think a clarification, before the board took action, we did ask all of the land agents if there was any pending offer or counteroffer in negotiation from any organic producer, and their answer was no.
Okay, and then, and we did have one Crown Appraisal Task Order amendment, that because the scope changed, there was an additional seventy-five thousand, approximately seventy-five thousand dollars in additional work that we approved to be done. Then, also on the twenty-seventh, we had the diversion authority meeting, and Commissioner Ebbinger has reported on that, and I really don't have anything to add to that, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Gross?
I had two meetings last Tuesday, the land meeting, Matt Jacobson, I think we sent it, eight parcels, that was eight parcels that's going to transfer over to City of Morehead, from FEMA, I think, or whatever they were, so I think that's going to be done.
Needs to come to the board, this board, for approval first.
And then Wednesday, at the Detox Center, part of that was discussed today. Also, we picked out the carpet, the brick, it's going to be used on the building, and B3 requirements, and I guess the rest was done with Steve Gertz here today at the meeting. Those were my two meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you. On the twenty-fifth, I attended a meeting at the Morehead Mosque with leadership there about mental health training for members and leaders, looking at that public health grant that we have for suicide prevention with the Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Coalition. And the leadership there are interested in doing some training for their members. When we did our listening session with new Americans on mental health, was that last year? A while ago. One of the things identified was that a lot of our new Americans will seek out their religious leaders, instead of wanting to go to a professional, and so it's really lovely that the leadership of our local mosque here is interested in getting that training so that they can be more supportive for their members, and getting them connected up with appropriate resources in the community. Thank you to them for that. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the CAP LP meeting, and I do not have my notes with me today, I forgot those at home, so Chair Mojo was also at that meeting, she can fill in anything that I'm missing, but we looked at the strategic plan, and treasurer's report, and we also had a spotlight with economic empowerment, and some of the work that they're doing, they provide job and skills training, and just a really broad spectrum of services for folks to do better. Then on the twenty-eighth, I attended the CEDS Regional Childcare Group meeting, our social services department, early childhood initiative, and our childcare project manager, Karen Pfeifer, all presented at that meeting on some of the initiatives in Clay County for meeting the gap of childcare spots that we have, and different ways that we're supporting existing childcare business owners to stay in business, new ones to get in business, so that we can provide quality care for kids that want it, families that want it, and parents can get to work. That concludes my reports, thank you.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the county-owned properties committee with Commissioner Gross. We talked about those parcels of land, to further the statement, the City of Morehead would like to, and Buffalo Red would like to work to make sure that, that the eight parcels that we addressed would allow them to have a continuous land ownership for the public's knowledge. Those properties were purchased with bonding dollars for flood mitigation, so that does not allow the county to put them back on the tax rolls, they need to be maintained with another municipality. It certainly looks, from our perspective, in regards to management and, and weed management particularly, to make sure that we dispose of to whatever proper municipality that would be, and this seems to fit. So that will come to the county board for that piece. I attended the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Management Committee that Commissioner Campbell did discuss. We talked a lot about the challenges that our current solid waste department is facing in regards to transportation of, of material there. We've done, this board has done, it's due diligence to make sure we're addressing those shortage, challenge, or those staffing shortages, hopeful that we can secure some additional drivers to help out. I also attended the Detox Planning Committee meeting, the, that Commissioner Gross reported on, Klein-McCarthy and Gertz Construction are really working to be responsive to the needs that our department is bringing up, so we're trying to get the estimate as dialed in as possible. We did have an update on the B3 and geotechnical pieces there. We're currently awaiting the report from those geothermal bores, hopeful that we can get those questions answered soon. That evening, I had a meeting with Mayor Carlson of Morehead on items of mutual concerns. There's a couple items coming to this board in the next few weeks surrounding those. And then the next day, I went out on invitation from the Barnesville Economic Development Authority, Stone Ridge Software has, was celebrating ten years in business in downtown Barnesville. They've now expanded to four other, four other offices in Canada and the United States. Great to have a business of such vibrance in Barnesville, specifically Clay County, so excited to celebrate with them. I also did, I also attended the MCC JPA meeting that Commissioner Campbell reported on. We had updates and discussed the upcoming crop insurance and flowage easement public hearings that will hap, will happen this week. An item of clarification that the easement hearing will be Thursday, November third, in this room at eight-thirty, so any individuals that that would be related information for should, should also attend. There's a meeting the evening before in Horace, I believe, yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Maybe I, just a slight correction, I think you used the word hearing, and it's not a hearing, it's just an information meeting.
Sorry, yes.
I just, just, yeah, that's all.
Madam Chair, it's Hickson.
Hickson. Wednesday evening in Hickson, but particularly, it's advertised, so if any of the five commissioners want to attend, that is an open opportunity for that. We did talk about a negotiation summary, and did move forward on, on those requests, and then did have, talked about the task order number five, there was an approval there. And then I also attended the Community Action Lakes and Prairies Committee meeting, as discussed. We had an update from this agency, Tom Iverson, did recap the five-year CAP LP strategic plan, talked about the six agency goals. They really, having served on that board during the first strategic plan, it's really exciting to remember what the agency goals were before, and how that agency has met and exceeded all of those goals, and now are setting new ones to best serve the clients in Clay and Wilken County. We did approve a Excel Energy Power Up program with Deed, that was really exciting, and they're currently in the process of hiring a finance director, so talked about their process going forward with that. The other item is, CAP LP is currently going through an American Disabilities Act audit of their buildings, making sure that their buildings are set up to serve all members of the public in the best way forward. I had a meeting with our county administrator yesterday to inquire as to when and if we've ever done an ADA audit of our campus, both physical buildings and online information, so he was going to have conversations with Joe and bring those items back to this board if necessary. And I believe that concludes my reports. The other item I might just note, the other, on top of the two diversion authority updates, we do have the senior elected officials training next Wednesday, that's also advertised. And as we've talked about emergency procedures, it really goes hand in hand, meeting with Homeland Security for those trainings, excited for as many people to attend those as possible. Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, Steve, were we, were we supposed to sign up for that, or is it something we can just show up for?
Yeah, we can, we can show up for it. I've talked with, with Gabe on that.
My intent, I hadn't signed up, my intentions are to go, but.
Okay, anything else? Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated also in the lands committee meeting, it's been well-covered. I also participated in interviews for both the administrative assistant and communication coordinator roles, that was, we spoke about earlier. I also talked with Sheriff Emteen, with some ongoing workforce challenges they're experiencing within their department, and then also met with Steve Gertz in regards to the board action this morning. The twenty-sixth, we had county management, we talked about our safety and security procedures that Mr. Sloan and Mr. Olson presented, we talked about open enrollment, and also the different projects update going on throughout the campus. On the twenty-sixth, we had the substance use facility design meeting number seven, and so that has been well-covered. I would, with the board's actions today, I would like to extend a thank you to Commissioner Gross for all his work. Not only was, not only was, was he integral in this piece and critical in, in moving this forward, but really from the start, whether it's been the auto home placement, whether it was the campus, the campus master planning, you are one of the commissioners that carried this building forward, and so, and thank you for all that, all that work, On the twenty-seventh, had a department head evaluation, and also the MPCA, or MCC JPA meeting, that's been discussed. And again, just in regards to the open enrollment for, again, our, our employees, it ends Friday. I think Anna said we still had over two hundred people that hadn't turned in their, their sheet yesterday, and so, please, 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 again, you have to, you have to sign whether there's changes or not. A lot of times, what happens is, is that, that there aren't any changes, it's just a signature, and so if you can get those documents to HR as soon as possible, that'd be great. That concludes my report.
Brian, do you have anything today? Colleen? All right, anything else for the board? If not, we adjourn.